Order.
Wait, wait, wait. Kathy's not ready.
Too bad. We're gonna start anyway. We have a roll call, please. This is where you can wait as long as you want.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Irvin.
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Present.
Mayor Protem Nyheart.
Present.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And Councilmember Irvin's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we didn't have a closed session this evening, so we don't have a report. We have the consent calendar up next. It's the Pledge of Counsel. Mayor Protem.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
A second.
Okay, we've motioned a second. Do we have any cards in the back? Just wondering, just in case. Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero. All right, no special presentations or public hearings this evening, so that leads us to Council Communications. Mayor Protem.
Just in the interest of what we're doing tonight, I'll be very short. I just will talk about A-BAG and the One Bay Area Planning Process that is beginning in 2014. I'll be talking about that more at the next council session because now's the opportunity for us to be really involved. C-KAG is coming up, there's on Thursday, and there's, that's the City and County Association of Governments, and A-BAG is the Association of Bay Area Governments, sorry. Do that for all of you. Anyway, I'll be talking more about that in January.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Yes, condolences to the Nick Gust family for Nick's passing. He's absolutely history of Pacifica embodied in, and the Nick Gust and his family. The Pacifica Historical Society also had a meeting, and the Grace McCarthy Award was given to Shirley Gibbs, who does a tremendous job for keeping the personhood of our Pacifica as a, our character alive and well in that society. We, some of us, I know Councilwoman Irvin and I were at the Sea Level Rising Meeting. Three hundred people showed up. That Congresswoman Jackie Speer and Rich Gordon and Dave Pine put together. It was excellent, excellent indeed, and we will continue to be having ongoing talks about sea level rising. And the idea, the main thrust was, don't just talk about it, you need to start now planning for at least three feet. So to, in the honor of our grandchildren, not so much ourselves necessarily, but, so that will be an ongoing research and collaborative discussion, and I think that's certainly well worth it. I did attend the city, I didn't, was not able to attend the city tree lighting, but that was terrible weather that night, I understand, but I was able to go to the elf market, and everybody was hanging in there. The Rockaway Plaza, so thank you to all those who contributed so much to making that a community event. That was excellent, and thanks to all those merchants for helping out with that. So happy holidays to everybody. Remember those who have soldiers and men and women far away from the comforts of home, and anybody else who may be having a hard time during the holidays. So happy holidays to you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Hello, everybody. I took in, I lived, I attended meetings, and want to wish everybody a happy, safe holiday season. And I did attend the Rockaway Beach Lighting, it was really kinda cool. So happy holidays to everybody.
Yes, but you were in disguise.
Yes. I didn't get to work the room.
For those that don't know, Mike was Santa Claus there, performing.
Very good one.
Councilmember Irvin.
And I, as well, attended the holiday tree lighting put on by the city, PBNR, and it was a beautiful event, very festive, and it was wonderful to hear the kids sing. And even though it rained, there was a great turnout. I really appreciate being part of something so festive and wonderful by the city. I also attended the Rockaway Tree Lighting, and that was another great festive event that brought the community together. So thank you very much to the Chamber and the Business District for organizing that. I attended, as Sue DeGruy just mentioned, the meeting, the Challenge of Sea Level Rise, and I just kinda wanted to go over some of the more important issues that were raised. Like Sue said, it is time that we really start doing something about it. And some of the more interesting points that were made, one of which was that most of the estimates in terms of sea level rise so far, even by the experts and the IPCC, have underestimated the sea level rise that we're gonna be seeing in the next 100 years. It's risen about eight inches in the past 100 years, and we're looking at approximately three feet in the next 100 years. And one really interesting thing that was pointed out was that even if we do everything perfectly in terms of reducing carbon dioxide emissions and greenhouse gases, it will still continue to rise because oceans are already warming, and that level of warming has already been done. So we will see a very significant rise in sea level, and it's something that could no longer be avoided. It's something that we really have to not only mitigate, but we also have to adapt to. And so in future planning, you know, we live right on the coast, and we're obviously gonna have to be addressing that in the near future. A lot of it had to do with bay, the bay, and who was gonna be affected, and of course, a big topic of discussion was San Francisco Airport, which is most definitely gonna be greatly affected. So things that we can do, and there are solutions out there, but we have to start looking at this as more, not only as a very serious problem, but also potentially as opportunities for a change in the way we address sea level rise. And living right on the coast, we obviously are gonna have to do that and come together as a community to have these discussions. So that was really informative. And I'd also really like to send my condolences to the Gust family. Nick is, of course, such a legacy in this community, and he has done so much for all of us, and I just send my deepest sympathies and wish you the very best in the, in the time to come. That's it.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for those reports. I don't really have anything to report as far as my committee assignments or other things. I do wanna say thank you to the city staff for the tree lighting, that's always a great event, and also to the Rockaway merchants, and congratulations to them and the Chamber of Commerce for the Rockaway Tree Lighting, that was great. And also thank you to city staff for the contribution there. I remember running into, I think it was pouring rain on one Monday, and city staff was out there cleaning up the area and getting it prepped, so stuff that goes unnoticed sometimes is, is really the hardest work. So thank you so much to everyone that made that event happen. It's, it's really a great event for our community. Thank you, guys, for mentioning Mr. Gust and his family. I do also wanna extend my condolences to the Gust family, and I'll be adjourning the meeting in his honor. Definitely a man that's touched a lot of people in this community, and, you know, he talked to people from outside of the community, and he's Mr. Pacifica or Mr. Rockaway Beach. And he's given a lot to a lot of people and influenced a lot of lives here. And he's definitely gonna be missed, so. Want to mention something else?
Yeah, I forgot. I was trying to follow the brevity thing and totally forgot to mention, for everybody that's here, we will again have the council and former council members who have met and now organized the employee, an event for the employees, and it'll be on the 18th at the Police Department. So we're really excited about all the contributions from various people in the community, and there'll be entertainment at about 12:30, very special surprises for that. But thank you, and I would've said the condolences, but I was leaving that to you two. I already talked to the families, so.
Very good. Great, so we'll close Council Communications and open oral communications from the public. Have a few cards here. First is Laura, is it? From HIP? Sorry, I don't wanna butcher your last name, so go for it.
Good evening, I'm Laura Finuki from HIP Housing, and I was here earlier this year to do a presentation about our organization, and I'm here tonight bearing a gift for you all of HIP Housing's 2014 calendar. They're hot off the presses this afternoon, and this is a calendar contest that we have for children, kindergarten through fifth grade. This year, we selected San Mateo, Foster City, and San Bruno school districts for the kids to draw a picture of their home and to write a statement about what their home means to them. And we received about 300 entries from, from the students, and we have a selections committee to choose the hard task of picking the 12 winners. And I just wanted to read a quote from one of the kindergartners that drew a picture and won. He's featured in the March calendar here. Says, "I can't wait to come home every day to my safe and cozy house. It makes me happy to help my little brother read, play, and be creative. We can also be really silly together, too." So we hope that you enjoy the calendars during the year. We thank you for your support for our organization. We help to provide and maintain housing for over 1,400 people a year in our county. So I wish you a happy holidays and a happy new year, and I hope you enjoy these calendars throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Nardello.
Hi, my name's John Nardello, and I'm just gonna read something. I was here the meeting before last, and this is a continuation about Pacifica Skies Estates' dilemma we're going through. When I moved to Pacifica Skies Estates 30 years ago, it was not only a top-notch park, it was also a senior park. I felt secure with other seniors to retire there since I owned my own home. Now, that was until the corporate bought the park and systematically started getting rid of seniors and changing the park to a commuter rental community. We, being the last homeowners left, are now senior retirees on a fixed income. I'm on Social Security. My home was paid off luckily. Otherwise, between a mortgage and a rent, I could not afford it today. The rent has gone up substantially and since, and we had not gotten rent, if we had not gotten rent stabilization from a good city council of, on our side, none of us would be there today. We thought or hoped the park would at least buy us out, like the others had, to turn it into a rental project, and our homes would at least help us afford other housing if we had to move, 'cause none of us really wanted to. As they continued their plan for the rental community, seeing what may happen to us, I prepared to relocate. I even put a deposit down on another place in another location. Then they backed out of the deal, and we maintained our homes for 30 years or longer. When they backed out of the deal and said they had no funds, I realized that was the same time they got this new attorney that can overturn supposedly the rent ordinance that we got, or circumvent it, you won't have to buy them out. Just, we'll get rid of them all, and you'll get the houses too. Now, I may not only be homeless, but penniless as well, since I came and sold my house to help me move someplace else. I, I just beg for your help during the holidays, if anything you can do for us, we are not bad tenants, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Debra Mallon? Would there be oral communication in any of that? Yes, Michelle.
Good evening. My name is Debra Mallon. I have lived in Pacifica Skies Estates for over 25 years. I fought long and hard to get rent stabilization ordinance enacted in 1991. With hindsight, I realize I should've continued fighting for vacancy control. If I had, perhaps the park wouldn't now own 78 of the 93 homes in our park. The 15 homeowners who have remained under the protection of the rent ordinance now face an $1,100 rent increase. I've done a lot of research in the last two months. I've found similar situations in city after city throughout California. In case after case, I've found wealthy landowners preying on weak and vulnerable. I'm not talking only about the 15 homeowners, I also see the City of Pacifica as weak and vulnerable. I have come to the conclusion that we were not the target of this attack. We will be the victims, but the target all along has been the City of Pacifica and the rent stabilization ordinance. The park gets funds from our rents, submetering. They got $9.5 million from investors in 2010, and a five-year, $11.5 million loan at the end of 2012 from HHF. That would be a total of more than $25 million in three years. Where did the funds go? They have not been used in the park. I chose a lifestyle that I believed I could sustain when I retired. I did not think that while I was preparing to live peacefully, park owners were having, were hiring a lawyer, PR staff, CPA, et cetera, laying the groundwork to obtain my home through economic warfare. I Googled the park's attorney, Mark Albert, and the phrase "rent control speech." I found a 2004 speech he gave in New Jersey. He had four points to make about fighting rent control. I'm gonna read you one. Third is actually make it expensive. Litigation is a strategy that works especially when cities are strapped for money. That often brings them...
You have one minute.
No. That often brings them to the table. It has worked for us. In essence, what happens is that the cities just get tired of fighting litigation. They can't afford to protect the small group's interests and bust the budget. Does this sound like Pacifica? Park has dragged us through the court hearing process on January 6th. They will be coming after the City of Pacifica. They knew they would never succeed in getting an $1,100 increase. They should get zero, but I'm sure they will get something for their efforts. They will then turn to Pacifica and use their deep pockets to outspend and outlast you in the court system. They will claim the rent stabilization ordinance has taken something from them. If the rent stabilization ordinance is abandoned, we will be at the park's mercy for whatever rent increases they feel like imposing. The sky's the limit. I will lose my modest home. I'm not looking at a very secure future in Pacifica. Thank you.
The next speaker, it's Mark, sorts of a nest, sorry. About that, another long name.
My name is Mark Shaposhnikov, I am resident of Pacifica. Issue I would like to bring today, a few days ago, I got annual alarm permit renewal. I have a few questions to the city council or to city attorney. Question number one, is this is considered to be tax assessment or a fee? No answer, okay.
You need to tell him.
What additional question?
Please state your questions, and we can get some answers afterwards for you.
What kind of service I get? Is this, well, the question number one, is it fee or is this a fee? What kind of service I get for this particular fee? Outside that any other person is out, alarm system at home getting?
We can get you some answers afterwards. Please use your time for questions.
My second question basically gonna be based on acid, but I understand all of the acid.
Not at the moment, not during public comment, but...
I had the opportunity to do some homework, and I picked it out today, California Constitution Article 13, Fee Assessment and Property-Related Fee Reform, dated July 1st, 1997. I'm not gonna read all of it, I'll provide this copy to your attorney, but I would like to read a few paragraphs. No fee or charge may be imposed for a service unless that service is actually used by or immediately available to the owner of the property in question. Fees or charges based on potential or future use of the service are not permitted. No fee or charge may be imposed for general governmental service, including but not limited to police, fire, ambulance, or library services, where the service is available to the public at large is in substantially the same manner as it is to the property owner. In any legal action contesting the validity of the fee or charge, the burden shall be on the agency to demonstrate compliance with this article. Subparagraph C, voter approved for new or increased fees or charges, except for the fees for sewer, water, and refuse collection services, no property-related fee or charge shall be imposed or increased unless and until that fee or charge is submitted and approved by majority vote of the property owners of the property subject to the fee or charge or the option of the agency by two-thirds vote of the electorate residing in affected area.
That's it? We'll get, we'll get you some answers after the meeting.
Tell them we're not allowed to talk.
I know.
Will you please tell them that?
Sir, we're not allowed to have a back-and-forth conversation right now, so we'll get you some answers after, where we can hook you up with the right staff to get some answers to your questions. Bernie Siffry.
I'd like to express my compliment to all of you. This has been a board that has gotten a hell of a lot done for this city, in spite of what you were left with from prior councils, who spent money as if it was water, and water is very precious, and so is this. But you got a heck of a lot done, and you all enjoy, should enjoy the holiday and the compliments of the public for the hard work that you've done. And I just wanna compliment you on what you have accomplished, and, so that you know it's recognized and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Slessinger.
Gotta hurry, I know you guys want that cake. Okay, check it out. Is Anna Booth here? No? No, I don't see, hi Courtney. You like that, huh, Marion? Don't miss a thing, do I? I think I should be the poet laureate, and since it's Christmas, it's time for my annual poem. I know you guys can't wait. Look at Bill, he's going, yeah. 'Cause, you know, I hope to keep the city on an even keel, but I can only wonder how that makes everyone feel. I'm a poet, I know it, I hope I don't blow it. Okay, remember, I did a rousing "Twas the Night Before Christmas," and then I did the 12 Nights of Christmas. Well, I've modified it a little tonight. So I'm doing my rendition of "Santa Claus is Coming to Town." I can't sing, but bear with me. My version is, "Santa Claus isn't coming to town. Well, you better watch out, you might as well cry, it's okay to pout, and I'm gonna tell you why, 'cause Santa Claus isn't coming to Pacifica." But Santa's making a list, and he's checking it twice, and he's very pissed, so he won't be nice. So Santa's not coming to Pacifica. He sees Pacifica when it's sleeping, he knows when the city is awake. Santa can tell if the city's been good or bad, and right now he says, "Let's fix Pacifica, for goodness sake." It's good stuff. Santa says, "We're much like SF Muni," and most certainly, I agree, 'cause Pacifica's budget is very puny, which all in town can see. But since Santa's a very, very busy guy, and flies so much through the sky, and since he has millions of other cities to fix, don't hold your breath, he isn't coming our way, 'cause Santa Claus isn't coming to Pacifica. Let's hear it. That's it? You got nothing? Man, this, this is a tough room.
Marty Anaya.
Good evening, I have a poem in my, I'm kidding, I don't. Marty Anaya, Pacific Coast TV, and I just wanted to say a couple things real quickly. At the study session that y'all had last week, a lot of great ideas were discussed. I've indexed them and bibliographed every single one of them, in case you need an electronic copy of it. But I did so because some of the things that were mentioned, many of the things that were mentioned, in fact, are things that either A, PCT is already doing, or things that we can do better to help you. So one of the things I'd like to do at some point is get together with your new city manager, hi, and, and share some of the ideas that I think would, would be most beneficial to help aid and ease some of the communications issues with getting information out to the constituents and so many of the other, other challenges. Second, and just as importantly, I'd like to invite all of you to our PCT Holiday Party, it's happening tomorrow night, and for that matter, everyone in the audience and everyone at home, please do come. It's at 7 o'clock, and it's an opportunity for folks to see some of the progress that we've made over the year, and see how they can get involved, because this is a community media center, and that means you all, so we do appreciate you. It's 7 o'clock, and it's at PCT 580 Cresby Drive, for those who may be watching in Half Moon Bay or on the coast side, 580 Cresby Drive in Pacifica, we're in Unit E, like elephant. And it'll be a good time, so I hope you can make it, pop in, drop by, and enjoy food, friends, and fun. Thank you.
Don Horsley.
Good evening, Mayor Stone and council members as well, city staff. I just, I'm Don Horsley from the Board of Supervisors. I started this year as the president of the Board of Supervisors, along with Mayor Stone starting his year. And the two of us, when we started off, we had the groundbreaking or the ribbon-cutting for the double-slide tunnel. You gave a great speech about growing up on a bicycle on the coast side. We both froze, 'cause it was a very, very cold day. We also went on Mayor's Walk. It was nowhere near as exciting as the walk with Mayor Nyheart, but it's an inside joke. But in any case, I look forward to working with the new mayor. I will no longer be the president of the board, but we will be opening a double-slide park, which will connect the whole of Midcoast as well as the town of Pacifica. We think it's gonna be about, draw about 80,000 visitors a year. We wanna work together with Councilwoman Nyheart on extending that great shuttle that you were so courageous at getting, and work for both the Midcoast and as well as Pacifica. Any case, I'm sure that next year's gonna be a great year. This past year was a great year, and it was a lot of fun working with you, and for whoever the new mayor is, I certainly look forward to working with that mayor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Courtney Conlon.
Good evening, Mayor Stone and members of city council. My name is Courtney Conlon. I am the CEO of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, and I've got just a few things, not a poem. I did like that poem, though, very clever. Anyway, so the third annual Rockaway Tree Lighting Ceremony, I just wanna thank all of our city council for being there. It just really was, couldn't have been a better, more beautiful, gorgeous, butt-cold-and-crisp night. And I want to thank Lori, under your direction, Public Works helped to decorate our tree in the plaza, and they cleaned up Rockaway, the Public Works Department, and for closing off Dondi Road, Dondi Way, it just made it so much like a little wonderful Thomas Kinkade evening. And I wanna thank our Santa Claus for being so patient and wonderful and putting smiles on hundreds of children's faces. Your patience is a virtue, and you're amazing. Next year, we'll make sure we have elves for you, okay? But anyway, I wanna give a really big thank you to Darlene Gonzalez, who, under her direction for this Rockaway Tree Lighting, she is a magnet for everything fun, and she really did a great job of bringing all the Rockaway merchants together, who really just helped put this community event on, and I just, it was just wonderful. So mark your calendars, for second Sunday in December of next year, we're gonna have the fourth annual, and it's gonna be bigger and better. And I just wanna thank all of you again for being there. The community really notices when you come and support, and I don't know how you're able to be in five different places in any given day, but thank you. And then I would also next like to just say that the Chamber of Commerce is going to host a special meet and greet with our new city manager this Thursday at 8:30 in the morning at Nick's Restaurant, and it's going to be warm muffins with our new city manager. And I invite all of you to come to that. And also, the next day, we're having our special member appreciation event, and it's going to be at the Chamber from 4 to 7. And then also, I just want to, on behalf of the Gust family, I was told to thank the city council for your thoughtfulness and appreciation of, of just thinking of Nick. And I personally am going to, on behalf of the Chamber, we're going to certainly miss this man, who is just a legend and legacy for all of us, and I'm gonna miss my Tuesday noon phone calls from him, where he will always comment and give me just a real good boost, or else tell me what I didn't say or what I did say, and he always will remind me to keep my banks cut. And who's going to be able to make those phone calls for me now? Maybe I'll have to talk to Chuck. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. All right, that's the last card I have from the All right, that's the last card I have from the public, so close the oral communications. And we have one item before we get to our reorg meeting, and we'll adjourn that. Kathy, do a staff report.
Mayor and council members, the City Selection Committee will meet on December 13th, and one of their responsibilities is to make appointments to certain regional boards. You have a packet in front of you. We received it late, because our deadlines don't mesh. And we have also Councilmember Irvin, who is not on that agenda, who is seeking appointment for the Domestic Violence Council, representing the city of Pacifica. And so she can be nominated from the floor at the meeting and voted on, but her name is not on this agenda from the City Selection Committee, so I just wanted you to know that. And that is the only one that is actually contested, where there's more than one person seeking appointment. So staff would recommend that council give direction to the mayor as the voting member of the City Selection Committee, or the council member holding the mayor's proxy for voting at that meeting.
One question, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I have a question to... Well, I don't know who to ask, but did Karen do a letter?
Karen did do a letter of interest.
Was it just late?
It was not received in time. It was actually mailed instead of emailed, so Becky Romero is aware, but because it's not on the agenda, it will just have to be handled at the meeting. But she is certainly eligible, and again, could be nominated from the floor at the meeting.
Okay. You have any questions here?
No.
Okay. I'll open the public comment on this. Do we have any cards? Okay, close the public comment, bring it back to council. So that's the only one that would be contested, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so if it's okay with council, we can do, maybe somebody could offer a motion that would, you know, put forward, that we would support the list, and then support Councilmember Irvin at that time? Or anything else you'd like? Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I'd like to move that we accept the list plus Karen, and obviously support Karen Irvin. It's a little tricky to get nominated from the floor, and so I can give you some suggestions.
Can work through that.
Yeah.
You guys can figure that out.
Okay. So that's my nomination, that's my motion.
Councilmember DeGruis?
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Great. And before we adjourn, I know that we couldn't talk about this, at this item, but maybe for next meeting, or when it's not too congested, we could talk about how we organize these. I'd like to revisit that, if it's okay with the council. I've always been of the persuasion that the mayor should do it. And now that, since I won't be mayor anymore, I can happily nominate that to somebody else, and they can go forward. But we can discuss it as a council, I'd just like to discuss it at a future agenda, if that's okay.
Are you talking about this?
Yes. All right, so that's our last item, and I'll adjourn the meeting in the honor of Nick Gus. And we will reorganize the City Council for the reorganization meeting. Thank you. So, can I ask the city attorney? Are we okay, I see on the agenda here for the reorg, there's no public comment section, is that okay? Just wanted to make sure that we're doing everything above board here.
Yes, adjourning to the reorganization is a technicality. You, it really is still part of the regular agenda.
Okay. Okay, so we're okay with not having public comment section here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we're doing everything above board. Okay, so, yeah, as far as my outgoing remarks, this year was, this was a really great year. I just wanted to thank the council for electing me mayor, and putting the confidence in me last year. And in reflecting, I think, on this year, I looked at my notes for the beginning-of-the-year speech, and just so you can kind of see, hopefully, we accomplished some things that we were looking to do. And one of the things that I mentioned was that this year was really gonna be about, you know, doing a lot of planning and not getting, kind of setting the track for the city to move forward. Because we didn't have a lot of, say, planning or goals established. We'd recently just done those in new goal study sessions, and we'd really just solidified those goals. So this year was really about taking our plans from goals to actual action plans. And then I think the next phase is gonna be to implement those plans. And when I look down at my big goals for this year, which was creation of an economic plan, which we did, creation of a communications plan, which we are just finishing. We just had the study session last week. And the last one didn't quite get finished yet, but we'll finish in the first part of next year, which is a plan, a home remodel plan, which we're trying to make it as easy as possible to remodel your house. And those are the three things I really wanted to accomplish this year. And it looks like those are gonna, almost done. Most of them are almost done, or we're gonna put the finishing touches on them at the beginning of next year. And, you know, as we look at the different segments of the city, and create where we want to go, really looking forward to the next step, which is with these initiatives and with the others, and I'm sure the new mayor will champion, and other, the council members will champion this year. We'll continue to kind of lay that track and then move forward. But this year, I'm really proud of the council work that everyone's done, getting involved at the committees outside of the city, bringing home a lot of money from the city. We've brought home a lot of different money for either Palmetto, for paving Lindemar Boulevard, which is little-known. Lindemar Boulevard's gonna be paved next year, from great work from staff going out into the available funds out there. And I think next year's really gonna be about, hopefully, implementing some of these things that we've been working on. It's really been a, been a great honor. One of the things I wasn't expecting this year was that we'd go through the process of hiring a new city manager. And if I knew that was gonna happen, I probably wouldn't have been so excited to be mayor, because as the mayor, you're kind of the point person for making all those logistics happen. And that was a long process, but I think we're all really happy with the result, and glad that Lori's here. And I think it went relatively smoothly when that transitioned. So, another great step into the future. And, you know, I think, looking forward, we have a lot of great opportunities here. We're gonna have some difficult choices coming up in the next year financially, but, you know, I think the council... I'm really proud of the council, because this is a new council this year. It was a new council, relatively new council. It's my third year, and I think you've all done a really good job this year in having kind of a, not always agreeing on everything, because that's healthy as well, to have some reasonable discourse, but pushing in one direction, for the most part. And I'm really happy about that, and I hope that continues on to the next year. So, it's been a great honor, and it's been a great pleasure for me. So thank you so much for this time. And, with that? Oh, thank you. And I think you're up.
So Lynn, I get to say a couple of things and do a little presentation here for the public who may be here for the first time. I want to thank you for all your hard work and your dedication, and for being the mayor, the way I really think a mayor should behave, you know? It's, yeah, you chair the meetings, and you don't really get to make any decisions. Nobody makes any decisions on their own. But you set the tone. You actually move projects forward, and you organize things in a way that, you know, really makes the work of the council much easier. And I really appreciate that. I also appreciate that you're the face of the council in many arenas, and you've been an outstanding face. I want to personally thank you for the goal-setting workshop meeting that we had. I think that was a wonderful beginning, and a great way to sort of begin getting us on track in a business sense. And I thank you for continuing the mayor's walks. And I'm not gonna even comment on what Supervisor Horsley was referring to, but I don't think that could be repeated ever. And also bringing forward the communication plan, and your leadership in a very difficult transition through an interim city manager, which was very effective, and then for our search and our end result with Lori, who I think we couldn't have done better. So I really appreciate your leadership with that. Throughout your year, you've also reached out to other mayors. You've participated throughout the county. You've represented your community to the very best of your ability, and you made it shine. On a personal note, it has been a privilege to work as a team at City and County Association of Governments with you on BPAC, which is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and myself on the full board. We worked with Van Ocampo, our Public Works Director, to assure several million dollars came back to Pacifica, and some that would not have gotten here otherwise had we not worked together. I remember actually standing in a parking lot in Seattle between speeches that I was making at a conference there, making calls to my contacts on CKAG and the TA, and I think I talked to Supervisor Horsley that day, too, because you told me to. And I knew you were making those calls as well. And in the end, the cut that was above us actually moved down to include us. And we were able to bring home money that otherwise didn't happen. That's real teamwork. That's the kind of collaboration we have to have on committees, and you've set that tone and that leadership, and I appreciate it. I know when your year is, mayor is over, it's like being in a long-distance run. You are tired and a bit spent, and so I want you to take it easy for a little bit. Rest, regroup, and when you're ready, jump back in, because there's always work to do. On behalf of the council, I want to present you with some tokens of our appreciation for a job very, very, very well done.
Thank you.
So first is the plaque. It's the mayor's plaque.
Customary plaque, thank you very much.
It's the customary plaque. Yes.
Thank you.
And second has become another, yes, the mayor's plaque. Another very important piece of what's become a tradition up here on council. And that is the passing on of... Go ahead and open it.
You're a better vice mayor than me, because I didn't wrap it when I... When I was giving mine to... At that time, marriage is around that. Very beautiful.
There are wonderful photographers in town, but somehow Sharon Walker has sort of been the norm here.
Beautiful photo of Pacifica.
And so, we pick out and pass on different, the photos. And then, just to round it out, you know, the elf market comes at a very, very good time. So there's a couple of things in there.
Oh, man.
Including, I...
Nicely wrapped.
Yeah, nicely wrapped. You could, you don't have to open it now, I'm just gonna say what's in there. Things from Pacifica, including the McGans, who live down here in Sharp Park on Beach, who make wonderful glass. So I, I hope you enjoy it, and thank you again for an excellent year.
My pleasure, thank you. Thank you. So one more, or did you want to make a comment, sir?
Sure.
Go ahead.
It makes it sound like it's so easy, and it isn't. It's been a very complicated and a difficult year, and you weathered it well. And also appreciate the times that you, many times, that you did thank the employees, so I really appreciate that, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Irvin?
And I'd just like to add, you've just made this year so much easier for me. It's my first year, and you were always there for me if I ever had any questions, if you need, if I needed direction, or I needed to go where to go to find out the information that I needed. I felt like you were always very, very supportive, and you wanted us, as a council, to function as highly as we could together. And it just made it so nice that we could all work together as well as we did, and that I could depend on you for the type of advice that you might need as a first-year council member, and I really appreciate it. You really felt like a shoulder I could lean on if I needed to, and I think you just did a great job leading the city, and I really appreciate that guidance.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything.
Councilmember O'Neill?
I just wanted to say thank you for your year of service. I know, having been president of the school board, it is kind of tough being the chair of the meetings, and all of these are a little bit more boisterous than school board, and, you know, and all that. So wish you well in your semi-retirement.
Going out to pasture. Well, thank you so much, I really appreciate that. All your kind words, very, very nice. And I'm glad you guys mentioned the things about the teamwork, because I don't, we can't do anything individually. We have to work as a unit to really move the city forward, and I'm glad that's, that's taking shape. That's testament to everyone here. And that leads us to our next item, which is the election of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So at this time, we'll accept nominations. We'll do the mayor first, then followed by the mayor pro tem. So, we'll accept nominations. Councilmember DeGruis?
Motion to have Mayor Pro Tem made mayor.
Councilmember Irvin?
A second.
Okay, any other nominations before we vote? Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Congratulations. And next, we will elect Mayor Pro Tem. Did I call you mayor now? Mayor Nyheart? Mayor Pro Tem?
We're not done yet.
Not yet.
No, I would nominate Councilmember Karen Irvin.
Any other lights or anything?
A second.
Councilmember O'Neill, second. Any other nominations? Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Congratulations. Councilmember Irvin? So, our new mayor, take your oath of office?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Pro Tem.
As well?
Okay. Who's doing it?
Kathy.
Oh, say the word.
We can just stay up here, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So if you'll raise your right hand, and insert your name after "I." I?
I, Marion Nyheart.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
If you'd like to make any remarks, is the incoming mayor?
Well, truthfully, this is an amazing thing, but I'm gonna tell you a little secret. I wrote a speech for him, I didn't write a speech for here. I will say a couple of things, because I kind of have a framework in mind. First of all, I want to thank the council. I want to thank the council for your support, and it's an honor, and I'm humbled to serve for you and also for the community. Once again, I am trying to organize my calendar so that I will have days off. I've been working, for those of you that don't know, pretty much this fall, and I see Karen and Paul's in the audience. Karen's over there. They take my dog for me, because my dog doesn't even know me anymore. But I've been working 12-hour days at the hospital so I can get things done, so I could, would be able to do this if it was your desire. So I will try to have a day every other week and do some of the same things that we have done previously. I really want to make sure that we continue to reach out to the community. I really want to make sure that we continue to reach out to the community, I'll reinstitute the mayor's walks and continue that tradition, and I want to make sure that we go places where we can leave something behind, much like we did before, like painting the parking lot at Rockaway, or fixing the streetlights, or making new things, because it's that way that we feel connected as a community, and you all see us. I've kind of, I mean, I did organize some thinking up here in case this should happen, and I want to kind of call my ear the three Cs. And the first one's going to be communication. I am thrilled that you have started the communication plan, both you and Jenny Jacobowitz did some wonderful work. We had an excellent study session, for those of you that may not have been there, that really pulled that together with more input from the community. And I'm looking forward to the implementation ideas from Lori coming forward by March, and I want to make sure that the watchword is all about communication. Implementing that and finding new ways to engage the community and get the community aware, I almost hesitate to bring up some things that I have heard over time, but it, and I probably won't, but it's just, it's getting information out in a way that people understand and can use it, and make your city government usable. That is like so difficult, because in our divisive politics of this country right now, we kind of get down on a local level, and I often point out, we're worried about that. But your local people impact your lives in very, very direct ways. And what we do as a community in terms of bringing home monies for streets and roads and things like that, I mean, we have to grapple, we're the sixth-largest city in San Mateo County, but we have to grapple with everyone else. And without a PDA, it's for only 30%. A PDA is a priority development area, it's part of the One Bay Area Plan, I won't go into all of that, but I can tell you, we're competing for only 30% of the pie. And so getting engaged in that One Bay Area Plan, and moving forward, and helping people understand what that's about and what it means to their lives, has got to be a watchword that we include throughout. The second C is collaboration. Lynn, you said it well. You don't do anything alone on council, you can't do anything alone. It doesn't work that way. You have to have at least three votes, and it's best if we move forward in some kind of an organized way when we make a decision. But I love input, I love discussion, and I love us working collaboratively in that discussion. I also like working with the county committees and being able to move and bring home not just dollars, but ideas and engagement. Lynn, you did a marvelous job of reaching out to other mayors in the county, and I really want to participate. There's talk of a coastal summit with Half Moon Bay and Midcoast, and I really, I really like that idea. But it's not just collaboration here, it's collaboration with our employees, in terms of figuring out how we can provide services and doing things differently, and we have a great new city manager to lead that forward. It's also collaboration with the community. Your engagement is vital. If you aren't putting into this your ideas, then a handful of people, I want to, I want to expand that handful into something that meaningfully represents our community, and so I look for that. There's also lots of issues, I hesitate to mention this also, but I talked to our city manager today, and I'm gonna just kind of bring it up, and I've also talked to Councilmember O'Neil, so I'll share it with the rest of you. There was an interesting presentation that was done at the Association of Bay Area Governments meeting that related to the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and some of you may know about that initiative. It's Highway 82, it cuts through a lot of cities and two counties. And they're working in that plan with Caltrans. And while they were presenting some of the modifications that they got Caltrans to do, I suddenly had this stroke of, oh my God, we need to work on this. We need to think about Highway 1 as representing us, and stop like it's over there and it's something we just sort of have to deal with, but it's like the main artery that connects all the neighborhoods in our town, and it should reflect us. And engaging Caltrans and collaborating is something, so I've also been talking to other people, and I want to see that kind of idea, sort of how we conceptualize it and think of it, thinking of the overpasses, the walkways, and, you know, when they're decaying, or the trash drives me crazy. Every time I get on there, it gets cleaned up, and then it's got, so having Caltrans understand that that is our home, that is our center, that's got to be a very critical piece. But collaboration also brings us back to community, and that's my third C, and it has to be about making those decisions, as I've mentioned throughout this year, together. We've tried to lead, we've tried to convince, we've tried to struggle, we've tried, but we have to tell our story in a way that people understand, that the community understands. There is a lot that we can do together. There is a lot that we can do that can make us thrive, which is, is like critical. We're all, we're not politicians, we're you, we're working people that live in Pacifica that happened to decide we could make some kind of difference, and I want to engage all of you and think about how we can do this together in a way that benefits everybody in this town. I really want people to attend, stand up, let your voices know, people that have not been engaged at all. And when I got dressed tonight, just one final thought, I was sort of, I was thinking about Nick, and I was thinking about Nick Gust, and I had run across a picture that I had where we were sitting side by side up at Chapel by the Sea for one of the Memorial Day events. And I was thinking about his leadership, and his style, and his thinkings about community. And we had lots of discussions, because Nick had lots of opinions about things and wanted to share them, and I can't say enough about, you know, I didn't agree with him all the time, but he had great, great ideas for the community. So I put on my service star. We get service stars for certain things that we do at the VA, and I, I put that above my pin for the city, and only because I want to make this year about service, and service in the community. So I have other things that I have ideas about, but I want you all to know that I am very flattered and honored, and I will work my tail off for you. Thanks.
That's it from us tonight, and we have refreshments here, and we look forward to seeing you after, and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, dokie, off to the hot turkey.
Sure.